There he is.
I'd like to call to order the Malibu City Council's regular meeting of April 9, 2018. Marshall Thompson, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Mayor Mullen, would you like a roll call to start the meeting?
Mayor Mullen, would you like a roll call to start the meeting?
May I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Lamont.
Here.
Councilmember Peak.
Present.
Councilmember Rosenthal.
Here.
Mayor Proton Wagner.
Here.
Mayor Mullen.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you, and thank you, Marshall, for that excellent leadership, national in nature. May I have a report on the closed session?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, members of the City Council. Tonight's regular meeting convened at 5:30, at which time the council recessed to close session pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.8. Due to traffic, I rolled in about 5:40, and I apologize for that. We then met and discussed only the item that was on the posted agenda. We took no reportable actions tonight and recessed the closed session at 6:08. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. May I have an approval of the agenda?
So moved, and I would like to adjourn in the memory of Bonnie Reese.
One second.
May I report on the posting of the agenda?
Would you like to take a vote on that approval first?
I would like to take a vote on that approval first.
All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. May I now have your report on the posting of the agenda?
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on March 29, 2018, with the amended agenda posted April 4, 2018.
Very good, and now we're getting to the ceremonial presentations, and I would like Lieutenant Jim Royal to meet me at the podium, please. Thanks for coming this evening.
Thank you.
Let me see, how am I going to do this? I guess I face the camera. So, we're making a presentation to our outstanding Lieutenant Jim Royal of the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department for seven years of outstanding service here in the city of Malibu. As many of you know, I work in public safety in my other job, and we are brothers with the LA County Sheriff's Department, and there isn't a finer team. It's often the case that different units have a bit of a rivalry, and they don't get along with each other. We have a stellar working relationship with the Sheriff's Department, and I have to say that I think we have the finest leadership in the Sheriff's Department here with our captain and with Lieutenant Jim Royal. So, I, as somebody who works with them in my other life, but as the mayor of our town where we put public safety as number one, I think we're super lucky to have the professionals of the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department under the leadership of Jim Royal. Jim's done outstanding job. It's not all about chasing down bad guys. You have to be a diplomat. You have to know how to talk to people. There's a lot of that that goes into it, and it's the most difficult job, I think, in America today. We wouldn't have the freedoms we have if it wasn't for the men in law enforcement, and we have outstanding leadership. And I just wanted to personally thank you very much. I'm going to read this citation, and we're going to get a lovely photo together, and then I'll give you a few minutes to address the crowd.
Thank you, sir.
So, this is, "The Malibu City Council commends Lieutenant Jim Royal for seven years of outstanding service to the Malibu community." Now we'll shake hands to get a picture, and then I will turn the mic over to you.
Okay. Where do you want us?
I want to stand in front of the rest of the council. That's for you. There's a handshake.
Hey, the whole council's in there. Bye, Lou. Thank you. One more. Right. Thank you.
One for me, please? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Riva, Council, Christie, and everyone else who works here. I want to just keep it real short and say this. It's amazing that it's been seven years, but it has been an honor to serve this city. This is, as you all know, an amazing city with amazing people, and all of you, all of your dedication. It's truly an honor, as a public servant, to watch yourselves and so many fine people that aren't recognized, step up and passionately advocate for whatever they believe in, but it's truly impressive, and thank you very much for the recognition. I appreciate it.
All right, now I would like Susan Duñez and the entire CERT team to meet me at the podium, please. Is there any particular way you would like to do this, since you're sort of the CERT team here?
Why don't you go ahead and read the combination, then I just want to make a few comments.
Thank you very much, all of you, not only for coming, but for being volunteers in our community. I'm very proud of our CERT team in Malibu. They are hard-charging people who've been, since the day I got elected, have been chomping at the bit to do more. And they're great people. I'm a CERT-trained person myself. I did that when I was a Public Safety Commissioner, and it's volunteer. It's all volunteer. Malibu actually benefits a lot from volunteers, whether it be Malibu Search and Rescue or the CERT team. And although this is kind of ground zero for natural disasters, whether it be fire or mudslides, that type of thing, if we have an earthquake, these people are going to be springing into action, and they've been trained for it, and they're ready to do what they need to do. It's a big-time commitment for all of them. We're special in Malibu because we have a whole bunch of people that really want to do it and are eager to do more, and I'm glad that now we have a Public Safety Director who's been very good about bringing them into the fold and working with them. So I'm going to read this citation, and then I'm going to hand all these things out to you, and then I'm going to actually turn the mic over to Susan so she can say a few words. And then, Tim, I'd like you to come up and maybe say a few words for the team, if you don't mind. So here's the citation. "Whereas the Malibu CERT team has sustained their unwavering commitment to the community over many years, and whereas they have actively trained and exercised to maintain and increase their skills for the benefit of the community, and whereas they have maintained and improved our radio communication capabilities throughout the city, and whereas they have assisted the city in teaching and publicizing the CERT program and other safety classes, and whereas they have helped to spread preparedness information in their neighborhoods, and whereas due to the committed efforts of the Malibu CERT team, the city's overall disaster response capabilities are improved. Now therefore be it resolved that the Malibu City Council commends the CERT team members for their ongoing commitment to the safety and well-being of the Malibu community." So, as the mayor, let me personally thank all of you for all of your commitment to the safety of everyone in Malibu, and thank you, Susan, for providing them leadership. And now I'm going to hand out all these citations while Susan says a few words. I've got more than there are people here, so I'll give the rest to you, okay?
Thank you, Mayor, and I think it's interesting. I don't think you should say that it's thanks to my leadership, because I've been working in public safety for many years. I worked with many, many, many volunteers. I have never worked with a volunteer group that is so self-motivated, takes the initiative to do things. I never hardly have to ask them to do anything. They jump right in. When they know something's coming up, they jump right in, saying, "Can we do this? Can we be a part of that?" You know, they look after our emergency supplies. They saw that radio communications were not that great in Malibu because of our topography, and they've been working very hard to improve that. They just do everything just on their own initiative, and it's amazing, and so it makes me look good, but I can't really take any credit. So that's why I just felt like we have to recognize this group of people, and they get together monthly whether or not I'm there. So, I am very grateful to have them as part of my team in public safety.
Tim?
How about saying a few words for the team?
Excuse me. The CERT program has two main objectives. One is providing training for citizens in the Malibu area, and that training includes, you know, fire safety, what to do in an emergency. It basically gives a person basic preparation of what to do in an emergency such as an earthquake. About, since Malibu CERT was formed, over 500 people in the community have been trained in this area, and they have some gear that they can use. And so the purpose of that is so they can help out their family and help out their neighborhood in the event of an emergency. Second to that are people who also are impressed with the CERT program and want to be a part of the actual CERT team. And those people are actually registered disaster service workers with the city of Malibu, and the majority of the team is here behind me. If you go out in our vehicles, our vehicles are stocked with medical supplies and search and rescue gear, and we're ready to respond if needed. And we would be taking care of our families in our neighborhood first, but then as soon as that gets squared away, we would report into the city and be willing to help if there is a natural disaster here. Thank you.
All right, team, let's reposition in front of the podium and get a team photo.
We've got to deploy.
Do these include dinner?
Tim, can you scoot your head a tiny bit over? There you go. Thank you. One more.
You guys earned it.
Thank you.
Okay, now I think we're getting a staff update on the Civic Wastewater Treatment Facility Phase 1. Oh, excuse me?
I'm sorry, did you guys not get the, are we okay? Hi. We would just like to take 30 seconds to acknowledge a graduating new member of the Volunteers on Policing, Robert Woodcock, and Josh and I just wanted to give him his pin right now for...
Very cool.
A graduating. Sorry for not planning that.
No, I apologize. All right, welcome to the team. Thank you very much. Now we get a staff update on the wastewater treatment.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Tonight, I'm going to give an update on the Civic Center Way Storm, I mean wastewater treatment facility project, Phase 1. This first photo is showing the project site back in July of 2016, and the bottom is a current photo of what the site looks today. We have three injection wells that we constructed on Malibu Road. Here's a picture of the drill rig putting in the wells on Malibu Road. Here's some pipeline equipment for the wells that go into the wells about 150 feet down. And here is the control equipment that's located behind the sidewalk and that controls all the injection wells. Currently, the contractor is in the process of actually starting up all of the wells this week. We hope to have everything kind of up and running, and all of the kinks worked out this week. We're also connecting all the controls from the injection wells all the way to the treatment plant, and that's important because we need to make sure we have controls from these wells at the treatment site so we can control them there. The pipeline and pump stations, here's a picture of Civic Center Way when we're out there installing all of the pipelines, the wastewater and recycled water lines on Civic Center Way. Another picture of the installation that was done on Webway, crossing PCH. And here's a close-up picture of the pipelines that are in casings that were going underneath PCH right at Webway. We stalled approximately six and a half miles of pipeline for the collection and the recycled water lines, and all that works in place. All the laterals are up to the property lines, and that portion of the work is complete and ready to go. Next, we have two pump stations that we installed. One of them is the Legacy Park Pump Station. Here's a picture of the equipment that's located at the Legacy Park Pump Station. There's a generator, some more electrical equipment that goes back in there. It's a vital part of making sure that that pump is working 24/7, even in the power outage. Here's a picture of the actual pump station that's located below ground, and it's like probably 15, 20 feet deep. And lastly, here's a picture of the pumps. They're blue now, and they won't be blue later. The next pump, or the next slide here, is the pump station over at Bluffs Park. It's a little pump station that takes wastewater from that area and pumps it over the hill on Malibu Canyon Road down to the treatment facility, and those are in and ready to be operated. Wastewater Treatment Facility Project. Here is a picture of recently of what the plant looks like. If you notice, a whole lot of visual changes, if you drive by a lot, you haven't seen a whole lot of changes, but all the changes and all the work that's been happening, it's been putting in pumps, putting in controls, and putting in all the equipment that goes in there, and that's been taken a long time to do, and it's very complicated, and it's very sophisticated type of process that we're putting in. Here's a picture of, the left-hand side is our Headworks equipment that goes in there. That's some screens that we have to take out all the bad stuff. And the right side is an electrical room we have where all the controls are at. Here's some more equipment that we have on site. That's the biological reactor, which is about 20 to 25 feet deep. And on the right-hand side over here is our membranes equipment, which is the final process of actually cleaning the wastewater before we send it over to the recycled water, which is next, right there. There's the purple pipe that's all the recycled water lines or pump station that pumps all the recycled water from the plant to the customers. On the left-hand side is the silver tubing that's in there. That's all the UV disinfection system that goes in that disinfects anything. So if anything happens to be within the wastewater, this UV disinfection system will clean everything and get ready to go. And this last slide is showing kind of, you know, the teamwork and trying to get our plant up and running. Everything is on computers. All of the equipment needs to be connected to these computer systems, and the reason is that we can't have someone there monitoring the site 24/7, and so all of the equipment and everything operating the plant is run by a computer system. And so when the operators go home at night, they have the ability to make sure that they can operate the facility off-hours, and they don't have to be there. And so for the last three and a half months here, we've been working hard, trying to get to that point to where we have everything communicating with our computer systems and operating everything and running the plant with water and running it through. And I'm happy to say that, or I'm hoping, I'm knocking on wood, that we're going to start the plant this week. We were hoping to start today, but there was a glitch this weekend, and we've solved that problem, and we're looking to go back and start the plant this week. And so that's a big step. Once we start the plant, it's a big step for everything. So, a couple of things. What's happening next in early May will be repaving the streets, specifically Cross Creek and Civic Center. Those will get fully paved. The trenches on Malibu Canyon Road and on Malibu Road will be resurfaced. The trenches will be resurfaced, and that will be completed in May. The paving and landscaping over at the treatment plant and doing a lot of list, a lot of... The paving and landscaping over at the treatment plant and, and doing a lot of list, a lot of, uh, pickup work, um, that will happen at the treatment plant. Another thing that the contractor needs to do is purchase and install all the lab equipment. That's important. So when we start doing all the testing with the, with the wastewater, we have that equipment there. And lastly, um, is doing all the sewer lateral connections. Um, we're, we're hoping with everything's going right with the wastewater plant, we're looking for the next two or three weeks is to start making our first connections, um, with, to the wastewater plant. Uh, we're, we're hoping the first one will be City Hall and maybe the lumberyard. And, uh, that's probably about two or three weeks. And with that, if anybody has any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
So, thank you very much, by the way. So to review, you're on schedule or ahead a little bit?
Yeah, we're, yeah, we're getting there. I mean, there's been some setbacks on actually starting the plant. It's a very complicated system that, uh, takes a while to make sure we have everything up and running and, and complete. Are we on schedule? Yes, we'll, we'll meet the schedule that, um, the regional board has, has put us. Uh, we've coordinated all of the lateral connections with the property owners and we made sure that, um, that schedule is being maintained.
Excellent. Anybody else have a question?
Thanks, Rick. Yes. Um, since it's been a, a long project and a lot of people have not, uh, heard about updates unless they watch it or they hear about it in one of the papers, but a number of questions I've had is what happens to the old plant across the street? Um, can you kind of just give us a general update or what'll happen to it, or maybe Riva would like to, so that everybody else knows?
So if you're referring to the plant that's on the, um, other side of Civic Center Way, that serves the condos and that is part of phase two, that's not part of phase one. So for right now, it's gonna keep doing exactly what it does and serving those condos. Uh, once we move forward with phase two and, uh, those condos are connected into the system, that site will be de-commissioned.
Thank you very much for that presentation. All right, now we're mo- on to, um, written and oral communication from the public. And my first speaky, speaker is Mr. Abdi's from Caltrans. Thank you very much. And you have no time limit.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, members of the public. Um, thank you for the opportunity, uh, to be here tonight. My name is Abdi Sagafi. I'm the Office Chief for Traffic Operations, District Seven, Caltrans. And with me are, um, Mr. Gatsun Okariki, uh, Office of, uh, Chief, Chief for Office of Permits, and then Tim Weisberg, who's our Public Information Officer, uh, for this area. Again, thank you for the opportunity to be here. Um, we've heard all the concerns from the public as well as the city, uh, regarding the congestion on PCH, especially during the last three to four weeks, uh, where it's been very unusual. And there are several factors involved here, and I'd just like to go through those, uh, and then talk about some of the projects that are either in the works or upcoming. You can call this the perfect storm. Basically, what happened, of course, we had the Easter break and then, uh, the, the spring break with the, uh, and the, the weather was nice. And of course, when the weather is nice, PCH is the place to be. And of course, we had, uh, several projects, and I'm gonna briefly go over, uh, the projects that are actively in construction. There are basically five active construction projects and five permit projects, all at the same time, along PCH. And I'll just briefly run through them, if I may, just to give you an idea of the level of activity that's ongoing on PCH at this time, especially in the Malibu area, which is a very long stretch of, of PCH, of course. We have a project that, uh, um, is to, uh, do pavement preservation. Um, and it's, um, uh, it's ongoing. It's about a third complete. Then we have another one, uh, which is the slope stabilization. As, as you know, because of the mudslides, we had to, uh, initiate a, uh, an emergency project to take care of the mudslide and, and protect the highway. Another one is, uh, installation of the pavement delineators and recess pavement markers, and it's about a third complete. And then we have another project, which is the repair of the drainage, uh, benches on the hillside, again, because of the mudslides. And the last, uh, construction project, and then I'll get into the permit projects, has to do with, um, uh, safety improvements, uh, along PCH. Now, on the permit projects, uh, okay, we have the five projects. Uh, one is at Malibu Canyon Road. The other one is at Cross Creek and Webway, which was just brought up. And, um, um, the other one is, uh, near Carbon Canyon, is a private driveway. Uh, and then, uh, of course, Malibu Pier, Mid Block Pedestrian Signal, that's at the, um, Malibu Beach Inn. Uh, and then last but not least, of course, is, uh, the repaving, uh, on the side of the shoulder, uh, near Las Flores Canyon. So you can see from this list that there's a lot of activity going on. And, uh, um, of course, of utmost importance to Caltrans is safety. Safety of pedestrians, safety of bicyclists, and safety of the motorists. And, um, PCH is a combination of several, several things are unique to, that, several things are, uh, make PCH very unique. One is, it's a commuter route. Uh, the other is, of course, is a huge, uh, tourist attraction. And then, of course, you have the local residents as well as the businesses. And all of these come together. And then whenever we try to make improvements, and I can, I can assure you that all the improvements that we make on PCH is to better, uh, the, the safety of the, of the highway and access for motorists as well as, as well as pedestrians and, and residents. Sometimes things happen beyond our control. There, we have certain control over the schedule of the projects. When a permutee is issued a permit, they hire a contractor. Of course, they have to inform us about their lane closure and when and how and who, and we have to approve that. But there has to be certain flexibility because, uh, like any other business, they are on a timeline as well, and they have to make sure that they meet those timelines and finish their contract in a timely fashion. Same goes with our contracts, the ones that we award, uh, Caltrans, Slope, uh, Civilization, uh, and there's the upcoming projects. I didn't even get into the upcoming projects. Um, I count ten upcoming projects on PCH over the next two years. And one of them, as you know, is, is a major, major project, the replacement of the Trancas, uh, Creek Bridge. That's a sixty million dollar project. Some of the other upcoming projects, beginning in July of this year, twenty nineteen, I'm sorry. We're gonna do, um, shoulder work, digouts and slurry, um, in, um, beginning, um, in twenty-one. That's a little further down is the Trancas. And then we'll, uh, do drainage improvements, culvert replacement. That project is gonna start also in twenty twenty-one, uh, providing fish passage. Uh, replace of, uh, replacement of the raised median island, which is in conjunction with one of the city projects. And then on and on, rectifying, clarifying discharge, permanent slope restoration, slurry seal, uh, shoulders and upgrade guardrail and enhanced tunnel lighting. The last one, of course, as you know, is at the McClure Tunnel. And, uh, we will enhance the tunnel lighting and also install what they call a cue warning system. Just when ten ends on Pacific Coast begins to alert the motorists if there's any stoppage on the, on the highway as they enter Pacific Coast Highway. So, in a nutshell, you can see that, um, how congestions can occur because of all this activity. Now, uh, what my office is doing to at least alleviate some of the congestion and make it a little bit easier while the work is in progress is, as we speak, my electrical engineer is out there. I just, uh, passed by as I was coming to this meeting and I had a little chat with him. He's looking at the signal timing at the, at the Cross Creek and, and Webway. And, uh, his report to me, um, was that, his immediate observation, he's, he's got about a hundred and ten seconds of green time on PCH, about thirty-nine seconds on Webway left turn and, and then, uh, coming down south onto his PCH, another thirty-four seconds. So what I've asked him to do, and, and let me, uh, step back for a second. Unfortunately, when, uh, we do pavement work, which is what's going on at Webway and, and Cross Creek in addition to other improvements, the loops that, uh, control the signal timing are cut. That's just part of what we have to do. There's no way to keep those loops active. So what happens is they go, uh, the signals go to what's called a recall, which means it's fixed, uh, green time. Now, uh, there's only so many seconds to distribute between all these roadways that come together. So if we take from, uh, Pacific Coast and give to Webway and vice versa, somebody will have to wait a little bit longer. However, that's in our control. And what my engineer is doing right now, as we speak, is looking at the traffic patterns right now and adjusting the green time. So I asked him to add possibly twenty seconds or so to the green time on PCH and take, which unfortunately means taking away, uh, a few seconds from the other two directions. But, um, once the loops are put back in, as, as the project is completed, um, and, and that will happen sooner rather than later, because some of the work that has to do with, um, peripheral work such as sidewalk and, and such, can be done after the loops are put back in. And I had talked to Gatsun earlier today, going forward, as a lesson learned, we are going to look into, and we don't know how this is gonna play out, asking the permities to provide temporary detection. In other words, when the loops, the permanent loops that are, are there to control the signal timing are cut, what is the permutee gonna do while the work is ongoing until the, the loops are put back in? Um, one of them can be video detection. So we're looking at alternatives so that it would, um, alleviate some of the congestion and give more time to PCH. Um, PCH being the main artery, of course, will get the lion's share of the, of the, of the time. Now, uh, he's also looking at, um, uh, I believe Malibu Canyon Road also, to look at the timing there. Because, uh, just to, uh, ensure a continuous flow. Uh, so those are some of the things we're doing to, um, address the congestion problems and, and the concerns from the public. But, uh, and last but not least, keep in mind, we have the moratorium that starts Memorial Day. So everybody's in a rush, the permities. And, and keep in mind, of course, we have the city projects as well as, uh, utility, uh, permit projects, that was our ongoing Edison and Gas Company. Everybody's trying to get their thing done before Memorial Day. So because they know after Memorial Day, it's only emergency work and routine maintenance. And, uh, so we are against the time limit here. And, and, uh, so that's one of the things. And, but I'd like to also add that we have an excellent working relationship with the city of Malibu and their staff. Riva, Bob, and their staff are, are great. They really help us. We have a, um, a teleconference. We had one this morning with Travis and, and other folks, uh, at the city. They tell us, uh, what's going on on their side and we coordinate with each other. Now, uh, there is room for improvement. Um, what we talked about today with our public affairs officials, and Tim can probably, um, add to that, is to, uh, create a, uh, a protocol, if you will, for all things on PCH. I know there's a website, I believe, that's hosted by, uh, PCH Partners, if I'm not mistaken. And that hasn't, okay, let me put it this way. We have not provided the information that needed, that they need in order to update their website so the public can go there. As a matter of fact, I ran into one of the city employees who happens to be a resident in the parking lot. Gatsun and I were talking, a lady named Mary Ann. And she was telling us that she went to the website and she couldn't find the latest information. And, and I told her, that's on us. We need to fix that. So, uh, we're working with our public affairs, uh, officer and, and, uh, we're going to fix that and provide at least information. We're doing it with, uh, Topanga Canyon community. They, they receive, but a lot more happens on PCH than on Topanga Canyon. So, so we need to address that and that's something that we're working on. But I'm gonna, uh, let Tim tell us a little bit about what, what they're planning to do.
Thanks, Council. Thanks for having us. Uh, so we, we have been doing a coordinated effort with, uh, the city of Malibu and, uh, with Matt Meyerhoff particularly, uh, with the city of Malibu, uh, Public Information Officer, to have a, a coordinated effort that has a coordinated message that we can use for, for future projects. So that way the, the public can, can stay informed and, and up to date on, uh, what's, what's happening through a variety of channels. And the city of Malibu has done a great job utilizing that with, with email blast that people can subscribe to. Uh, there's Twitter, Facebook, as well as Nixle. And we will also utilize our, uh, Twitter platform as well as our website to, to let people know about the closures. And the most important thing, too, that we're also working with, uh, with, with you guys and with the city of Malibu is to, um, when it comes to Caltrans projects and projects that we have more control over when to schedule the work with, since we're working directly with the contractor, uh, is to, um, when we can, whenever possible, to, to do the, the, the work at night and, and balance between, you know, the lea- having the least amount of impact on traffic, uh, as we can. And again, we'd like to emphasize, too, that we, we do realize how vital of a, a stretch that PCH is, not just for residents, but for people like me that wanna go to the beach when it's, what, ninety-five in downtown LA today? So, um, there's a lot of people that, that utilize it and, um, certainly don't wanna be stuck in congestion. So, um, we're doing what we can to, to alleviate that in any way we can.
Hello, Councilman. Uh, my name is Gatsun Okariki. I'm the, uh, Office Chief of Permits. I actually came today to, um, indicate that, um, as you can see, there are several projects in, in PCH, capital projects and permit projects. So we're making every effort to make sure that we coordinate the timing in these projects. But, uh, one of the reasons why they're all pointed out at the same time is because everybody said they're running after, uh, funding termination, uh, schedule or, uh, like, uh, Abdi said, there's a moratorium coming up. But, uh, we are working hard to make sure that our permities, when they report that they're gonna start work, that we look at projects that are in the area to make sure that, uh, we done, uh, that PCH is not congested anymore than it should be necessarily. The project we have on Cross Creek, we're looking at probably May twenty-fourth. We should be rounding up on that. I cut into the permutee and, and the work they are doing. Uh, the whole purpose of this permit is to, I hope it's beneficial to the city of Malibu. Uh, we try as much as possible to work with the city, uh, as much as we can. We do, though PCH is a state highway, we do not intend to impose, uh, too much on the city. So we consider it as a main street. It's, uh, Caltrans has a main street policy that says that, uh, major highways like this that go through cities, that we duly consult with the city to make sure that, uh, we're all in sync. And we're also working very closely with our PIOs to report projects, to make sure that, uh, our capital projects, the, the highway paving projects and the permit projects are well coordinated and the information is gotten out to the public, uh, to make sure that, uh, uh, they can make intelligent use of, uh, detour routes, uh, during construction periods. I, I believe my colleague, Abdi, covered most of the things. If there are questions, uh, we'll be open to answer. Thank you very much.
Gentlemen, thanks very much for coming down and giving us a detailed update. And, and, uh, does anybody here have any questions for these fine professionals?
Thank you. Uh, is there any kind of, uh, clause or stipulation when you hand out the awards for contracts on the timing for the vendors that you could impose on them as an activity to contact the city for peak periods? Because quite often the city is blamed for something that the city has no control over. So if you were to designate, as you did in the beginning of your talk, that you have active development and maintenance and then you have permit, where the permities hire the contractors, is there a stipulation or can you make it a stipulation? the contractors, is there a stipulation or can you make it a stipulation prior to awarding the contract that the times be considered with the city because they're acting inside the city? Is that something you could enforce or make it part of the bid project? Thank you.
Even just make it part of the policy of having the work happen at nighttime hours, preferred off-peak hours.
Okay. Let me, let me take a, stop at that. As far as permit projects, we do have in the provisions for the contractor or the, the permit contractor to contact state inspector. And the state inspector is actually obligated in some way to inform ambient cities, the cities that are, the local agencies. So they will be aware of the project coming. We should work very closely with that. On the second question, what was that again?
Pertained to timing.
Yes. As a matter of fact, we, we do have an established lane closure chart for PCH from McLaurin Tunnel to the county line. And this is actually meant to be updated every two years. And we usually make the city part of that discussion to, to decide on which time period that construction can go on within PCH. Now that we have concerns, I know there's a project that's been advertised right now that the work should be starting at 7:00 PM. And we understand as a company, we're looking into if we can push it out to 9:00 PM, just like we do on, on holidays, for work to start at 9:00 PM and then into, through the early morning. So that is something that we, 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 we consider and that's something we work on. I, I think there's an ongoing discussion now to improve the later, the latest lane closure chart that we have for the area. And we are considering all these concerns.
So we can hope in the future that you will tell the contractors doing the permit work that they should consult the city about some of the timing? Is that what I'm trying to get to so the pitchforks don't come out at us all the time?
Will do.
Okay.
Thank you very much for coming. Some of it Jefferson spoke about, and I, I think a couple of things, like starting tomorrow, Tuesday and Wednesday, April 10th and 11th, 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM, PCH number two westbound lane closed at Cross Creek. So hopefully everybody knows that. It sounds like there'll be, I mean, even though it's going westbound, there'll be traffic. And so I guess that I, the, the one word that I heard that I really liked was protocol. And I think if we can develop some better protocols so that as soon as a project, whether it's, you know, a private one or a contract one comes along the line, it gets fit into this protocol, this schedule, the proper people at the city know, whether it's Public Works and then Matt in Public Information, and we can get the word out. And also to be able to get that information in time so that the city can give feedback, this is during spring break, it's going to be a very busy time, and be able to move some of that to the evening hours where it wasn't thought of earlier. I think my other issue is that sometimes, and I know this happened last week or the week before, in preparation for a project or they're waiting for somebody to deliver something which has to be done during the day, a lane was closed even though it was hours and hours until the person actually arrived to deliver what it is they needed to deliver. And whether that was true or not, but it was closed during the rush hour and it could have been open. So the oversight on those things is really important to our community and so that lanes are only closed when they need to be closed and not in preparation for, oh, this is going to be happening sometime this afternoon. I'm not saying it happens two minutes before, but people can communicate with trucks and things like that to say, okay, we'll be there in an hour, start shutting it down.
Yeah, that shouldn't happen unless there's an open trench.
Right.
Or a hazardous situation that they are probably waiting for the material to fix that. Other than that, you're right, they shouldn't just close a lane.
Well, and so the, the, I guess what I'm saying is if there's a protocol out there and there's a, an oversight, that those things should happen less often. And just to put my check that I also want to see as much as possible, and I think 7:00 PM is a little early. I think seven, I mean, 9:00 PM, actually Malibu's pretty dead at 9:00 PM and later. So, and which makes it much, much safer for our community. And we'll see you at the PCH Task Force on Wednesday.
Yes, I'll be there, 10 o'clock sharp. And, and I believe Gadsden will be joining me as well. I just wanted to add to Gadsden's comment about the control over, you know, closures and, and this mishap that I, I hadn't heard about, that, you know, traffic was held up because of a delivery. Fortunately, we have one permit engineer for many of the permit projects along PCH. His name is Elias Fire. And he's, he has a, he is very experienced. He has a pretty good handle on what's happening. And so that way, he doesn't have to communicate with anyone else. He can, he's, he knows all the activities that are going on. Unfortunately, what happens sometimes, permities may do things that are maybe outside the protocol. And, and that takes some policing, for lack of a better term. But, but because, and I don't know if he has any assistance, I'm sure somebody is helping him. But he is going back, at this point, I understand there is no assistance. So he's a one-man show and he goes back and forth between these five permits that I mentioned and making sure that they're adhering to the, to the protocol. But there is a protocol for permits. I, I think, you know, permits is pretty well established as to how the permits are issued and, and monitored.
I meant more of a communication protocol.
Correct.
As opposed to...
And I can add to that. Particularly when it comes to the permits, we, I've worked out with the, the Office of Permits that even before they even start thinking about discussions of, of the work and the work schedule that's going to happen, is that once a permit is approved along any stretch of PCH and particularly in the city of Malibu, that we, we are notified so that we have a general idea of where it's going to be and the general idea of the type of work that's going to be done and can kind of coordinate then whether it's looking like it's more feasible to do at the, during the day or during at night. And then at that point, the city can be, become part of that, that discussion and determining the hours. But that's certainly something I've worked out with the Office of Permits in terms of communicating when a permit is approved, so then we can get the ball rolling on that. But before with, at least from a public affairs standpoint, it was mostly construction projects that were Caltrans and not necessarily with, with a permit that obviously isn't a state project.
And if I could just add one more thing, for night work, we have to be conscious about the level of noise and lighting. So we have asked our, the people who are involved in the permit projects as well as the construction projects to make sure those loud activities are done during the day and then at night is, or there are activities that can be done to minimize disruption to traffic.
Of course, it doesn't matter if it's a, if it's in a non-residential area, then we can work at night. But if it's residential, then it's a problem.
I know that you guys are also responsible for all the freeways in the entire state of California, et cetera, et cetera. But PCH is one of the most important things in Southern California and our city has more of the PCHs than any other city in all of Southern California. And so consulting with us, I think, might be a really smart thing on your part. The, the one thing that I have noticed over the years of dealing with Caltrans, I remember it took me 17 years to get a left turn signal at Big Rock. There were some people in the audience that sat here and all threw it.
I think your hair might have changed color during that time.
So the one thing that I can tell you is that I know Laura and I have been on the PCH Task Force for the last eight years. And with Jim Royal's leadership, we have managed to get all the police forces to start talking to each other and obviously with you. It seems now that since Kerry Bowen is there, we have had a much more open and fruitful relationship with Caltrans and the city of Malibu. We'd like that to continue. But I do understand that it's kind of like trying to turn around a battleship. And we see it moving slowly, but, you know, we'd like to see it move a little faster.
Yes, and, and, and thank you for noting the, the very positive relationship that District Seven Caltrans has with the city. We are very much aware of the fact that Malibu has 22 miles of PCH within your city boundaries. And, and trust me when I tell you that I have one dedicated squad, one senior engineer plus five employees. And I want to say 70% of their time is spent on dealing with PCH and, and making sure that, you know, we don't miss anything and we do things that, that would alleviate traffic congestion and, and keep things moving. And, and what I'd like to add is that these projects are, as Gadsden mentioned, I believe the one at Webway will be done by the end of May.
That's the anticipated.
Anticipated completion. So the pain is, is, is short-term. And then the improvements that will come about the left, the right exclusive light right turn pocket, the ADA improvements, the southbound left turn from Pacific Coast to, to Webway.
Should we just have our phone calls forwarded to your office?
Of course.
Okay? Because we all get them.
So whatever, and, and Tim, of course, from Public Affairs.
You can pass them along to me.
3630-897.
Yep.
213-897-3630.
Happy, happy to, to take the calls and answer any questions that...
I don't know, he, he...
Be careful what you wish for.
Could you repeat that number once again?
Yes. Do we want that for the record?
I, you know, in, in growing up and being here, this, I gotta, I don't know if it's a bottleneck is the correct term, but on the eastern end of Pacific Coast Highway, the daily cluster scribble that goes on, on that highway is something that I was just kind of curious to know, aside from the traffic management plan that'll offer the signals to be synchronized, which is not coming until 2021, is my understanding, or somewhere around there.
Yeah, that's a city project.
What can be done to better allocate the timing of that light to the cars on Pacific Coast Highway at Topanga and PCH? That is a public safety hazard in our community. I see people in the audience that live in the area that has plagued our beloved Pacific Coast Highway for many years. And I'm just curious to hear what is going on about that and how you can better time the lights to give the priority to Pacific Coast Highway.
You know, that's, of course, needless to say, this is where two major highways come together, Pacific Coast and Topanga. Now, going back to my earlier comments about how to distribute green time, if you will, amongst different signals. And I have, again, the same engineer who's working on the Webway, Cross Creek signal timing, he's working on, on that one as well. His name is Dean DeLeon, a very good engineer, electrical, he's been around for a long time. He is looking into this. What we need to do, he has to do a study and, and he's actually started doing that, I'm happy to report. He's going to monitor the traffic patterns and, and the volumes both on Topanga and PCH over the next two weeks, between now and towards the end of April. So by early May, he will come back with a plan to me to show how we can distribute this green time between the two highways. Now, as you can imagine, the demand varies during the day, how many cars are coming down Topanga, going up Topanga and going up and down PCH. So we have to quote-unquote fine-tune the, the signal timing. Unfortunately, because it's a cross-section, you know, I, I had this wild thought about maybe considering a roundabout at this location, but I don't know, that's, I don't know if that's quite a popular idea yet. It's, it's one of those things that, that is far-fetched, of course. But whenever you have a signalized intersection, there's only so many seconds you can divide the, the two directions, but...
If you put a roundabout there, would it allow for more cars to flow through it?
I believe so, because with roundabouts, as, as you may know, there is not a whole lot of stoppage. They, the cars flow through without having to stop. There's no signals, there's no stop signs, it's basically yielding to the traffic in the circle. But again, it was just something in the back of my mind I thought about, because there have been other locations, not necessarily in the urban areas, but in rural areas, like for example on Route 138 in Palmdale, where we did put in a roundabout and I was the project manager on that. And it's working just fine with all the truck traffic and everything, it's, it's working perfectly. May not be the solution at this location, but it's, it's something that, you know, as an option. But let's wait to see what my electrical engineer comes back with at the end of April. And I'll be happy to inform Riva and the city of all the findings and see how we can improve that. Sunset is another location where we have the challenge.
But Sunset's different than PCH because in the morning every day, people sit in their cars for 15 minutes, a half an hour, or whatever it is. And it's not only am I talking about the folks in Malibu, I'm talking about all those people that use both Topanga and PCH as, what would they call it, Z-traffic, right? Traffic or commuter traffic that's, that's coming through the area. And I would just, it seems like we've been thinking inside the box for a long time on that with zero and what I would, is minimal improvement. And I would appreciate to look at a, you know, it's, it's a great suggestion. I think it's something that should be, you know, explored. You're the, the manager of this area and this district and you're clearly saying that that will allow more cars to go through there. So it may be not something that people want or that people understand. You know, people in other countries understand roundabouts a lot more than us Americans in some places. But I appreciate, you know, looking outside the box at a, possibly a better solution. And if we can get that timing to better help the flow of the cars on the highway, I don't think why somebody should wait for, you know, five or 10 minutes on the canyon, but yet somebody on the PCH should wait for 20 or 30 minutes. And I don't know exactly what the numbers are. But it seems like nowadays, you know, the, many of the, the concerns from residents surround the transfer of information. And information travels very quickly now and someone can look at their phone and, and, you know, see what that, that timeline is, or the Caltrans engineer can see that it's read on Google Maps and what's going on. You know, if you look at that Monday through Friday every day, you're going to see that read on Google Maps. And I would just hope that maybe there's some other options that we haven't looked at yet that you guys would explore. Thank you.
We will. Yes, sir.
Gentlemen, thank you very much for coming down and being willing to face the ire of Malibu. Appreciate that. And I lived in Europe as a young lad, we had roundabouts all over the place. I think it's probably worth exploring. It's a great idea. That's thinking outside the box. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Got it?
Yep.
Okay, next up to the podium is Sienna Real and the Imagine Fest Young Leaders.
Mr. Mayor and council members, did you know most children who are trapped in sex slavery don't make it to 18 years old? My name is Danielle Watanron.
And my name is Sienna Real.
We are 14 years old and we are both in eighth grade at Medea Creek Middle School.
We are here today to tell you about a very important cause that we are advocating for. We are members of the Young Leaders Council, a group of positive, proactive teens dedicating their time and energy to fixing and fighting sex trafficking through Imagine Fest. In addition to advocating for the cause, we play a significant role in the creation, planning, and execution of the festival itself. Did you know that 2 million children are exploited every year in the global commercial sex trade? Here in our own country, 100,000 kids are sold into sex trafficking every year. It's happening right in our backyard. Interstate 5 and Highway 101 are common travel routes for human trafficking. This issue is important to me because none of these kids have the opportunities that I do, to go to high school, college, and live my life in freedom. They have nothing to look forward to except abuse and pain, and by joining Imagine Fest, we will be able to give these kids an inspiring future.
I joined Imagine Fest because I believe these boys and girls deserve a future and life that is worth living for. In the, in the world, there's so much negativity going on. We have the ability to spread hope and shed light on these boys and girls. It is an opportunity of a lifetime. I believe age doesn't affect or prevent your, how, how you can make a significant difference in others' lives. Have any of you heard of Imagine Fest? Imagine Fest is a community event featuring yoga, art, live music, local vendors, food trucks, inspirational speakers, fun and empowering activities for children, something for the whole family. The festival is happening on Saturday, April 21st, at Peter Strauss Ranch, from 11:00 to 7:30 PM.
Unlikely Heroes, our beneficiary, is a local nonprofit organization which rescues and rehabilitates child victims of sex trafficking here in the US and around the world. Since November of 2011, Unlikely Heroes has rescued over 300 children in five countries and opened seven restoration homes. The average age of children rescued is 11-years-old, but they have saved children as young as a few days old to boys and girls who are young adults. Once the children...
Once the children are rescued, Unlikely Heroes provides them with a safe and loving home, education, medical treatment, and post-trauma therapy until they are adults and ready to re-enter the world. If you feel compelled to support our cause, here are a few reasons to get involved. You can buy tickets to gift to family and friends. You can list our events on the city calendar. You can connect us with small local businesses for tax-deductible sponsors and donations. In return, we would be happy to welcome you to the festival as our guests. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak here today. We look forward to collaborating with you in the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much, ladies. Perfect timing on three minutes. That was excellent.
Should that sit?
No, that's really good. And, and I just want to make a comment here. I am, I work for the Fire Department, and the County of Los Angeles just mandated that every county employee take a very lengthy continuing education syllabus on commercially sexually exploited children. And I learned a lot, you know, to be honest with you. I thought I knew what's going on, and you're right, there's slavery going on right in our state, and it's, it's horrific. And I appreciate the fact that you're doing something about it. It's very noble, and I appreciate you coming down here and sharing this with us. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think somebody came last year also told us about it. Yes. You came la, okay.
Next is Oscar Vitorio, and you have four minutes, Oscar.
Good evening, council members. My name's Oscar Victoria. I am staff council with the Mountains Recreation and Conservation Authority. As you're aware, the MRCA last year purchased property within the community of Sycamore Park, and as you're also likely aware, the city recently instituted a enforcement action against the MRCA for the placement of a picnic table, garbage can, and a statutorily required sign on the property. As you also may be aware, that the, the property in which the, those items are located on also was, has a coastal development permit for the building of a two-story, four thousand one hundred eighty-four foot, square-foot residence. And, and as such, the MRCA's position is that while we are fundamentally against the notion that any kind of resource preservation or open space requires a permit, any sort of permit, nonetheless, the MRCA must take the appropriate step to protect, protect the taxpayers' interest in the property, as taxpayer funds were used to purchase the property. And since we are also in ongoing litigation with several community members within Sycamore Park who are seeking in part, in part to prevent the MRCA from accessing and visiting the property at all, the MRCA is going to take the appropriate steps to protect the public's interest in the property, and as such, we will be pursuing an extension of the CDP for the, for the project, of which I provided you the, the approved rendering of the project. As you can see, it's a fairly large project, in case the MRCA is forced to sell the property to a developer. And as you're, I'm sure you will, are aware, the, the value of the property will be fundamentally tied to the permit, and as such, we will be submitting by close of business tomorrow and, and an extension request for the coastal development permit. However, I also need to mention that Joseph Emerson, the executive officer of the MRCA, has pledged that every cent that is, comes from the proceeds of any such sale were to happen would be entirely used to improve public access within the city of Malibu. As such, all that being said, the MRCA fully intends to exercise its property rights within Sycamore Park and its ability to utilize and visit the property pursuant to its granted, its, its, its rights and its, and its deed. And as such, we just wanted to make you aware that we will pursue, we will be pursuing the CDP extension. Thank you.
Thank you. And the next speaker we have is Scott Dietrich.
Excuse me? I will keep this brief, and I'm glad that I was here in an evening when Caltrans was here. I'm coming on my own not as vice chair of Public Works. It's interesting that we've been hearing for a couple of years about putting in a crosswalk down by Las Flores around the Pacific Coast, but we didn't hear anything about the construction going on at the Malibu Beach Inn for the crosswalk for their valet service and employees. And it seems to me that we are supposed to be informed, consulted, and have comment on such projects, but I did want to inform the council that we were not, and when we asked Rob and Art about it, they just threw up their hands saying that this was, Caltrans had issued the permit, but it was out of the city's hands. And it, it seems to me that if we as a city are going to have input in such projects, that something needs to be done at a higher level than our commission because we were not informed.
Is that it?
That is it. But I would add one thing to what Skylar said. On PCH, the congestion has gotten longer and longer. It used to be a half hour long, and now goes until ten or ten-thirty. So, thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Next is Lloyd Ahern, and Lloyd, you have four minutes.
This evening, I'm gonna talk on two subjects. The first one I was gonna talk about is, Malibu Times is going to have an article about Sycamore Park, and I cannot believe that Oscar walked in here and made my case. They are being sued. Now, this is unbelievable, so, and you'll hear, you'll read it on Fri, on Thursday, for fifteen million dollars each, the six people that they've sued, plus they have fifty John Does. So, this man and his organization, there's an intrusion into Malibu that, Rick, you know all about and all of us know, but it's getting worse. And we gotta stick together and not let this kind of stuff go on. Second subject, I want to talk about, Business Roundtable on Friday, we talked about the maps, the FEMA maps, we wanna, we got together with a group of people. We want to form a peer review group that, with our coastal engineers, David Weiss, Reggie Green, maybe Janela, all the people that live in Malibu know who they are. They're, they're, they're the creme de la creme of coastal engineers. We want them to go over the FEMA maps, have kind of a little, not a little, a big seminar where we can have a town hall type of deal. And want to unearth this so that everybody in Malibu knows what's going on, because right now, as much as we're trying to get this out and people are trying to learn, it's a very complicated thing. And, and Christie, you remember what we did with the local coastal plan? We had Lloyd Zola, we had those workshops. And it really worked good, because by the time everybody got up to speed, you know, we didn't get everything we wanted, but we were satisfied that we had done the best we can. If we don't get on top of this thing now and get a law firm and our coastal engineers to work with Moffitt and Nichols, they're, all of a sudden FEMA will close us down and we won't be prepared. So, this is a perfect example right here. You gotta be ahead of these people, because FEMA is like these people. Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Lloyd. Excellent judicious use of your time. Carl, you're next, and that's our last speaker.
Good evening, council members. So, I had two items I was gonna speak to, but the Caltrans just gave me a third. Lauren Lou, as you go on Wednesday, maybe talk about getting Malibu to look at the priority of, of projects that are going through. I know that the lost, well, the LaCosta Light has been in, or the stop, the Hawk system has been in works for at least ten years, and I think the Manny Brothers one has been in the works for, what, a year or two since Coastal said so? So, I, I know that the Manny Brothers will help our tourists who come to town get across the street in the valets, but the people of the LaCosta neighborhood who come down to the Beach Club, they're not gonna have this happen until at least after one more summer. That's painful, not so great. So, maybe if we can get some way to look at the priority list to make sure those happen. So, two other things, both about the beaches, the people who live on the beach, as Lou talked about, the FEMA thing is of serious concern for me. I know Riva's talked about the process, and we've gotten appeal in, and I appreciate you guys pushing out to Moffitt and Nichols to get involved in this, but I would like to get the coastal engineers involved as well. I know David Weiss did our, our bulkhead in 1983, so he certainly has a bit of information about this town and how building works and doesn't work in here, so I would really like to get all those folks involved. And then the, just, the point being, we need to be prepared. If the appeal is accepted and we open it back up and we get in, great. If it is not accepted, we need to get legal folks in the process, because the two thousand Malibu residents who live on the beach are gonna be affected dramatically, and I don't think they realize that if they have a house burn, there's a darn good chance, unless all of our building laws are changed along the beach, that if you have a thirty-one-foot uprush and you have a twenty-eight-foot maximum, you can't build your house again. So, we need to be ready for that. And then the last little piece is about, Jefferson and I've talked about this for years, is about sand on our beaches and all the rest of our homeowners on the beaches. I've been here fifty years, and we have very little sand relative to what we had twenty years ago. So, in the long term, start thinking about what we can do to fix that. We have drought that doesn't push sand down the creeks, we have building regulations that contains the sand and the dirt that comes, comes off the hills, so unintended consequences, we no longer have the sand on the beaches, which also affects us. So, I'd like you to get involved in that, and looking at retention reefs and other things are certainly our folks on Broad Beach would be very pleased if you did. Thank you.
Thank you, Carl. And now, we are at commission and committee and city manager updates. Would you like to go first?
I would be happy to. Good evening. I'd like to start by introducing a few of our new staff members. I had a few new members here at the last meeting, and we have the rest of our new planning staff here tonight, so I'd like to introduce Justine Kendall, who's our assistant planner, Kendall Irvin, who's our planning technician, and I'd like to welcome back Renika Brooks, who's our associate planner. Some of you might remember Renika from her first go-round here at the city. So, I'm very happy to have all of them on board and getting everything moving along in the planning department. So, welcome aboard. I'd like to extend a, a thank you out to our CERT team. As Susan said, I'd like to echo her comments. They are a great team to have on board, helping us as responders in our community, and it makes me feel safer knowing if there was an emergency, they were out there, ready to help our residents in their neighborhood. So, very grateful to their work and volunteerism here in the community. And then I'd like to extend a thanks to Jim Royal, who I believe left the room, but Lieutenant Royal really takes care of this community. He works basically every single day, and I know that because I talk to him every single day, including weekends, including nights. He is always in touch with what's going on in our community and making sure that we are safe, and he goes above and beyond what really any member of law enforcement should do for a community. So, we owe him a debt of gratitude, and I'm really glad that we were able to give him his tile tonight. I'd like to also thank Caltrans for coming out here tonight. I did reach out to the district director, Carrie Bowen, last week when there were so many concerns, and they responded immediately that whatever they could do to try and help. And so, I've heard all of the concerns, and I'm working with Caltrans to make sure that we avoid some of the problems that happened this past week. I'd like to announce that the next public safety town hall is April 26th at 7:00 PM, and they'll be talking about alerts and warnings, so important information to have. And this coming weekend is our twentieth annual Chumash event. It'll be held at Bluffs Park from 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM on both Saturday and Sunday. There'll be off-site parking, and so visitors should look for the signs to get directed to parking lots. And the last thing I'd like to announce is that our library needs assessment is still open. It closes on April 20th, and it is available on the city's website, so I encourage everybody to take that. And once the survey is done, we'll be having a town hall meeting in May to discuss the results. And that concludes my remarks. Thank you.
All right. Any other commissioner or committee updates from anybody? Okay, then I'll open it up. Go ahead.
Next week, I'll be attending the Santa Monica Bay Restoration Commission meeting, where I will approach the executive board with the wishes of the Surf Rider Foundation and the MSA about replenishment of the cobble and the sand in front of the Adamson House, and to remove materials from the western end up near the colony, and see if that works inside the lagoon restoration program, because it's still under review and observation, and we're spending several thousand dollars a year of funds from EPA to monitor that site. So, while we still have the funding, I'd like to get the assessment done. I'll bring that forward to the executive board next week. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'll go. First, I'd like to join Riva in talking about Jim Royal. Our sheriff's department is just sensational. Josh Ty and Mike are just wonderful, but when it comes to the word outstanding, that's where Jim Royal fits in. He is absolutely outstanding, and Riva's right, he is available twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, and I know because I've called him on those odd hours, and he answers, he's there. He is a sensational human being, and we are fortunate to have him. I would also like to commend those two young women that were up here talking about human trafficking. For two young ladies to, to spend their time working on an issue that's as important as this, just inspires me in terms of what our young people are capable of, and it's just terrific. I'm really glad they were here. I want to talk a little bit about Sycamore Park, because one of the things that I had asked for the last time we had a meeting was to actually discuss this zoning code interpretation about the criteria for entry gates. And what I didn't do is ask for consensus, so I'd like to do that now and bring it up at our next meeting, but now, I would like to expand it a little bit, and if you're all in agreement, I think we need to discuss what's happening to our neighbors in Sycamore Park and see what it is that the city can or can't do to help them. And if that's something that you all agree with, that would be great, otherwise I'll bring it up as my item next to it.
That sounds like a great idea. All in favor?
I would support that. I.
Yeah, and, you know, specifically for, if it gets handed to be agenda item, the criteria for, and the process for having a gate, and the differences between a private road and a public road, and timeline, and how long that takes, et cetera. That'd be great.
Yeah, 'cause the last zoning code interpretation was done by the city council in 2005, so if we can get that on the agenda, as well as discussing the other issues in Sycamore Park, that would be great. As far as I've been doing, I attended a California Contract Cities Association Executive Board meeting in Glendale. I am attending on Wednesday the LA County Commission on Alcohol and Other Drugs at County Public Health Offices. I'm gonna try to do the Pacific Coast Task Force meeting before that, and then I'm going to the airport to go to Sacramento to spend the day on Thursday lobbying for our bill. And on Friday, I'm going to Pomona for the League of California Cities Policy Committee meetings. And there is Jim Royal right now. Let's have a round of applause for Jim Royal. Thank you.
Thank you. Lou, Laura, you want to go next?
It's just the Jim Royal Show tonight, so I just want to add to, Lou didn't say very nice things, but Riva did while you were out of the room, but I just wanted to add that you kind of started right around my first time that I was mayor, and I remember we had actually a death in the city that was very, there was a lot of press around it and a lot of things going on, and you worked so closely with me because it was, you know, my first time being mayor, and you really taught me a lot. And I think, the thing I think of when I think of you is you're very level-headed. You don't, you know, jump off and get, you know, upset or angry or this, which is good for a peace officer, but I think that you get it from a lot of different directions, and you're always very responsive, and you are very thoughtful when I have, ask you about important issues. You don't just, you know, give me the answer right away, you give me a long answer, and sometimes you email it to me and sometimes you call me, but it's really thoughtful and it helps educate. But it's really thoughtful and it helps educate me and that's what I appreciate the most. And as both Riva and Lou said, you are incredibly accessible, too much so sometimes when I call you and then I'm like, wait, is this his day off? So, and I know you work really hard in the summers during the summer beach team too and you get to wear a different color uniform, so at least there's a little bit of a change. So thank you from me personally and from all of the people here. I just, a couple of things that I did this week. I, Riva and I met with our state senator, Henry Stern, with some of the rest of the COG members, our council of governments, to go over things and ways that Henry can help us with issues that we're having in the city. Also went to the Business Roundtable and where Carl did discuss some of the sand replenishment and I'm all for that and finding ways to make that happen. And then I went to Southern California Association of Governments meeting last week, SCAG, of which I am the COG representative. And I also sit on the Energy and Environment Committee. And I'm going to give this to you, Craig George, but we had a really fascinating report on a study that was done in Ventura County and they looked at the impacts, the difference between using raptors or using rodenticides and everything to control squirrels and gophers and everything around their levees and around, because it gets to be a real problem because of all the water that goes through their agricultural areas and they have a lot of problems with the burrowing animals and they actually destroy the levees and the roads and it can be quite dangerous. And so they did the, the county did the first ever study, it hasn't been done anywhere, comparing, they put up raptor poles and owl boxes and really fascinating results. And I'll give them to you and maybe even at our next meeting, I would love to be able to do a little presentation on it. I mean, it wouldn't take more than five minutes or I can ask the gentleman who did it to come also. But it, the bottom line is, the surprise is, and it's, maybe it's not a surprise, that the raptors were much more effective than the rodenticides, even when they controlled for the type of agriculture and all of those things. And actually owls were more effective than the hawks and probably because they work more at night and, like Caltrans, right? So, and it, anyway, it's really interesting and I'd like to bring that to us. Just, I want to congratulate the CERT members. Thank you to Caltrans. And the young ladies that came and talked about the Imagine Festival came last year too. So I really, I agree with Lou. It's really nice to see young ladies get involved and to see how they're putting their spare time and how they're working for the betterment of everyone. Oscar, I just have to thank you for coming into the land of the enemy, probably. That's always a hard thing to do. And I just have a hard time believing that the residents of that community wouldn't prefer a house there than to what MRCA is trying to do and looking to do. I bet you they, I mean, I don't know, but I would imagine that they would prefer a house to be built there. And then I wanted to respond to Scott Dietrich. I guess he left. But he's really, he is misinformed and he, and maybe Riva can speak to this, about the reason for the crosswalk that the Malibu Beach Inn is putting in and that it wasn't a city project. It was part of something that the Coastal Commission asked them to do. It has nothing to do with valet. I see my, my planning commissioner out there going, gee, did we pass something that we didn't know about? It has nothing to do with valet. It has nothing to do with getting those people across the street. It was part of a coastal, and maybe Riva, you can just say a few words about that.
Sure, of course. The crosswalk that's being installed by the Malibu Beach Inn was mandated by the Coastal Commission as part of a beach access way that the hotel is also installing. It was a requirement from the prior owner of the hotel and the newer owners, the Manny Brothers, inherited that requirement. And so it's a project that was mandated by the Coastal Commission and permitted by Caltrans. It's not a city project like the La Costa project.
And that's why the La Costa project, it's going to get done, so, but it wasn't, we just didn't want to add insult to injury and do more. I just wanted to let people know a couple of things that are coming up, the PCH Task Force. I will be in, also in Pomona this week for policy meetings and then the week after in Sacramento for league legislative days. The State of the City is going to be on April 20th where our mayor will be doing a presentation. Maybe he'll speak a little bit more about that. And then on the 19th is the annual senior center party. On April 21st, we have our shredding and e-waste here at City Hall. So save all your shreds and the paper kind and bring all your e-waste down here. Please don't throw it away. And then we also have Waste to Waves where they collect polystyrene and make them into surfboards. And now they're also taking your old wetsuits and they're making them into yoga mats. So in fact, we're going to be honoring Waste to Waves at our next meeting because they really do great stuff and we've been working with them for five years now. Thanks to Mike Pearson bringing it to my attention and we were able to then start working with them. Pepperdine is doing Earth Day events and our next library speaker series is part of that. Paul Hawkins is going to be at Pepperdine. It's a joint project between the city and Pepperdine and he's a really great environmental and dynamic speaker. So that's at the 11th. And then of course Chumash Days this coming weekend. And I think that that's all. Thank you. And I wanted to welcome the new people that are working for the city. Welcome and I hope your tenure is long and fruitful and happy.
Thank you, Laura. Skylar?
Thank you, Rick, and fellow council members. And thank you to our new staff and returning staff member for making Malibu your home, hopefully for a long time. We appreciate the hard work of all of our staff. Just to echo what everybody else said, Jim, thanks for making Malibu a safer place and we appreciate you. I know the council does and the residents do and thank you to your service here. Rick and I had a ANF meeting earlier today. We'll have a new schedule of fees coming out with updated, based on our CPI soon. And just wanted to thank the folks from Caltrans for coming down here. I think as a, as a member of the public and somebody maybe that lived in the, I never lived in the La Costa area, but I could see how it would be quite frustrating if you had worked so long on getting something approved and then all of a sudden, you know, a project happens rather quickly associated with a big hotel and that probably doesn't spell out very right or well. But I think that, that I know that I met with Riva and my planning commissioner about that today. And I'm hoping that with any of these projects in the future, that we get the proper information to our staff to look at it in a timely fashion, not too late and that we can do better at that and we will. And I think that that falls on all of our responsibility to be paying attention to what's going on. Oscar. I don't think that you're here as the enemy. I just think that I would like to see the MRCA be a better partner to the community of Malibu. That's what I would like to see. I think that you guys can be a great partner. And it's really frustrating to see the divisiveness that happens in a neighborhood when something like your guys' mission maybe gets in the way of our own neighbor's peace and serenity. And I think that that's something that is very frustrating to many different communities in Malibu and that just like you guys will stand for your property rights, rest assured that the rest of the communities in the city will stand for theirs. And I would also just note that I found in my time of going up and living here that people come to Malibu for peace and quiet, not always for, you know, the constant traffic of visitors to their communities. And I think that those people in that area bought their homes with that in mind and that's something that definitely weighs on every council member up here when they look at land use. So I do hope that you guys can be a partner with that neighborhood, depending on what happens, whether you sell the property or not. And I know that our planning staff will do everything by the book to make sure that if you are, an extension is warranted, that you receive it. And I appreciate you coming down here and addressing the community and thank you for that. And I do hope you come when it's on the agenda. I guess that's what I got. Thank you.
Thank you, Skylar. Jefferson?
Yes, thank you. I would like to address a couple of speakers, first of all to Lloyd and to Carl on your questions on the FEMA maps. And I would like to reiterate how important this is for the entire community. It was mentioned there are 2,000 residents on the water and these FEMA maps, we're in a questionable area here with what we're proposing as a city through the firm of Moffitt and Nichols, who's the engineering firm that we appropriated the funds to do the assessment and to dispute the FEMA findings. And I think at this time, it's probably up to the council to take some kind of creative foresight and move to do something so that if the position that the city maintains is not the one that FEMA will accept, that we should start our, getting our, collecting our data and prepare things for the lawsuit that may come forward. And I'd like to propose to the council at this time, if we could put this on an agenda for the future and have the community members come because at the FEMA maps seminar that they had, it was shocking to see how the whole system worked and the $2 million that FEMA has paid out in restitution to the members of Malibu over a 30-year period and the $50 to $60 million that has been collected. I asked one question, could you please produce some of the financial awareness so that we know as a community what you've done? And to this day, we have still not received it. So I'd like to see if the council would like to see that on an agenda item in the near future. Hopefully I can find that consent.
Jay, I would just add, I don't know if, I would like to hear more information about it. I know if Riva, if you had anything to add on any update from FEMA, if there's anything that we're not aware of at this time that we've received back from them.
We have not gotten anything back from FEMA. We do have our appeal filed with them and we have scheduled for the next council meeting an update from staff on that appeal and process. And we can certainly take direction from council at that time if you'd like us to do anything further. So I'd already had that in the works, but if you'd like me to embellish about it based on further direction, I'm happy to do that.
Thank you, Riva. I think that might be the position I would take at the next meeting then is to invite several of the people and the property owners on the beach to come down and voice their concerns as property owners right on the water. So I think we're going to have to address this really soon because this is coming forward very quickly and, sorry.
Do you want to wait till we get something back?
It's, we'll get an update and then at that time, we could make a decision as a council on what we may want to do because we, Moffitt and Nichols would be representing us and that's just one firm. And when you go into battle with these big guys, if you have, you've done your research and you've peer-reviewed the work that one firm has done with another firm's work and Christie might want to add to that, that it makes your job a lot easier if you've gotten two reviews rather than just one. But I'd like to propose that in two weeks.
And I don't know if it's possible, I think that that's something for us to definitely warrant here, but I don't want to, you know, I'd like to see a member from FEMA here if we're going to invite all the residents down here to ask a bunch of questions. And I don't know if that's possible to do in the amount of time, but I would like to see somebody from FEMA here to answer questions because I don't want our staff to be bombarded with a bunch of questions that they are unable to answer because they're not the decision makers on this stuff. And I think that the, our best solution in this is going to be following the process by which is set forth for us to deal with it through our appeal process and, you know, having their staff here to hear the concerns of our community. And it doesn't do good when everybody comes here and then they're not going to hear it because they're not going to go back through the minutes and they're not going to have experienced that. But I think it's more important for them to, to be here and be present during that and that we can get better information to our residents by having them here.
If I could just add that maybe the best course of action would be for us to get an update, provide an update to the council at the next meeting and for the council to provide direction to staff to schedule a public meeting with FEMA representatives. And I can, I will work on that, but it won't happen at the meeting on the 23rd to have that, but we could do it at a future date very soon.
Yeah, I think that's sufficient. Thank you.
Thank you, Jefferson. I, here's my update. I actually spoke to, on the next-gen FAA flight path battles, I actually spoke to the lawyer who defeated the FAA in court from Phoenix. And he was quite successful and hoping to find the key to victory when my conversation with him, he was not as encouraging as I would like, have liked him to be, but we have not given up. We're still figuring out our course of action and I do still think that we will be able to improve things for the future. I'll keep you posted on that. It's complicated, you know, dealing with FEMA. You can imagine what dealing with the FAA is like. Okay, so it's not easy. Speaking of entities that are not easy to deal with, it's great to have the guy from the conservancy down here. You make our case for us. And I echo Skylar's comments and nobody's dealt with the conservancy probably more than I have. And in terms of, in a difficult manner and in a court. And it's always kind of surprised me that, if you think about it, the conservancy and the person who runs the conservancy should be the most popular organization in the city of Malibu. I mean, because everyone loves open space, they love preservation, they're all generally environmentally inclined. And I think, you know, we have harmonious relationships with Caltrans, we have harmonious relationships with the county, we get along with the sheriff's department, we're even having civil discussions with the FAA. But here's the guys who are supposed to be taking care of Mother Gaia herself and actually owns more real estate than the city of Malibu does and we're 26 miles long. And for some reason, we have a very corrosive relationship with the conservancy and it's disappointing. It's very disappointing. So I would say thank you very much for coming down here. Thank you for telling us. Some confused at times about what you guys are all about. I mean, sometimes, for example, in, in my neighborhood, there's a gigantic house that's much bigger than any house that was built. And the only people who spoke in favor of it was the conservancy. So sometimes you have mixed messages and you've got a town full of people that supports your mission and our goals are the same as your goals. And there should be a way that we can all live in harmony and if we have better relationships and better working manner, then I think we'll probably, you'll benefit and we'll benefit. And I think that's probably, that's my feedback for you and I do appreciate you coming down here. Carl, sorry about the crosswalk in La Costa, 10 years, a little too long. Seems like we should be able to help those guys out there. That's kind of a dangerous area. And I can see you going up to the mic. You going to say something about that?
I just wanted to say that that project is permitted and actually our public work staff was ready to proceed with it in the next couple of weeks, but due to the other high number of projects going on on PCH, I asked that we postpone it till after summer. So that was some, a decision that I made due to the traffic concerns against the wishes of my public works department who were eager to get it done, so.
Riva, and just going outside the box here, I know that we don't permit construction after Memorial Day before Labor Day. What if we were to do night construction in that area on a really tight schedule to get that project done in the beginning of June or something? Is that possible or no?
I'm not sure it's a can of worms that I would want to personally open, breaking that moratorium. And I would also be very concerned about the proximity to the number of houses and the noise and light that would be generated from night work. But I'm certainly happy to look at it and see if there's any way to do it, but I, off the top of my head, couldn't answer that.
Yeah, I guess for me, what I would just ask, maybe if we were to reach out to a handful of the residents in the immediate area, if that was something that they wanted or that they understood that it would wait till the end of summer. Because I just think that we're really sending the wrong message when a project is happening by a larger entity. They're obviously paying for it and that's why it's happening in the timeline that it's happening. But I don't want our residents to feel slighted by that.
All right, Carl, let the record show, you've got people going to bat for you and you've got people fessing up to why your project was stymied. That's, that's actually progress, so that's good. Jim, I know you don't like all the attention, but thank you very much for being the fine person. professional that you are. We're lucky to have you. Cert team, they all did the smart thing and got out of here, but we're lucky to have those guys. I, too, am going to the California League of Cities in, meeting in Pomona as a part of the Public Safety Committee meeting. And as Laura mentioned, I'm giving the State of the City address on April 20. And that is it. And now we'll move on to the consent calendar. Does anybody have anything they want to pull on the consent calendar?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Without 3B7?
With pulling 3B7.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I have a speaker for 3B7. Robert Gold.
Good evening, Mayor Mullen and council members. First, I want to congratulate Bob and Rob and all the staff for bringing in the wastewater treatment plant on time and under budget. It's an amazing task, so they should be very well commended for it. So thank you. Here tonight, on behalf of Scott Gillen, the owner of the Case Project and the five homes that are being built next to Bluffs Park. While Scott and I endorse the proposed guidelines for the use of Bluffs Park, and we believe staff has done an excellent job, we would like to have one amendment made to it. Three of the five homes are more than 500 feet from the property line of Bluffs Park, and therefore, under the TUP ordinance, would not be entitled to notice on any TUP application. We'd like that to be amended so that all five homes would be able to receive notice before an application is heard by the city. And while I'm here tonight, also, I would like a clarification of a couple of issues as whether the TUP applies to just the green portions of Bluffs Park or the parking spaces, parking lot as well. Will the applications take into consideration noise from trucks and generators? And under what circumstances will alcohol be allowed to be served at these events? And then finally, just a question about some of the events that are less than 200 cars, 200 cars, 200 attendees. What are the rules or regulations for those, such as coffee and cars, which often have more than 200 people attending them? So thank you for your time and consideration, and we hope you pass the regulations this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Gold. Anybody have any comments on 3B7?
I think notification to the other three homes that are just outside the 500-foot radius is fair enough. Maybe if that TUP is also applied to 750 feet or 1,000 feet, that we don't just aim it toward the southeast direction, but it also pertains to homes that are on the other side of the Bluff Park, so it doesn't look egregious that somebody else is left out because the five homes said they want one. So if we made the radius 750 feet, does that include the three extra homes? Okay, so if you made the information radius 1,000 feet, I would propose that the 1,000-foot radius extend up toward the Pepper Line or the west direction as well.
And what about Malibu Road?
I think Malibu Road is, are there about 1,000 feet down at that end?
I mean, I don't know what if it's measured from, if it's measured from the property line or if it's measured from the center of the park, because it's a pretty large park.
I know somebody down in Planning has an answer.
Well, I think that Mr. Gold makes a good point because they share a common driveway and access and would be affected by any large event there. And they're probably the only homes, really, that are, did you want to say something?
Well, no, I just heard that it's from the property line, so if it's 500 feet from the property line, that really, that would not include all three of those?
But if you live in one of those, you have to go through that large event area to get to your house, correct?
Correct, that's why we're concerned about it. It's a shared entrance, so the property, the driveway is actually almost 2,000 feet from, actually from where you come in to Winter Canyon, to Winter Mesa, rather.
So why not just say that any homes on the plateau there, I mean, up on top, rather than doing the square footage, I mean, you know?
That'd be easy, we have the APN numbers for them.
Yeah, because it's, we're just talking about the Bluffs Park events, we're not talking about changing the TUP process for all of Malibu, yeah.
That seems reasonable then.
Thank you. If I may, Jesse, in terms of the events with 150 people or more, how many times are we actually having events where there's 200 people or more? And do you look at something, for example, like AYSO on the weekend as being an event because there's well more than 200 people that come for AYSO? I just want to have a clear understanding of that, or are you just specifically going at other events?
Good evening, Mayor Mullen, members of city council. No, we do not consider youth sports organizations within this special event policy. As a matter of fact, just to clarify too, 150 is the number that we were, we have used in the past without actually being in writing. That's a number that we just consider to be a number that affects the park. Within these guidelines, we've actually bumped that to 200. And what we consider an event that's a large and over 200 people would pertain to outside organizations that are trying to put events on, and then also to Chew Mash Day and Concert, Concert on the Bluffs, which are two very, very big events. This, within the TUP, there is a maximum of six events that are allowed at that park per year within these guidelines, so it still leaves some room for interpretation, but things like youth sports organizations and some of our smaller events that we do as a city that may be over 200 but aren't super impactful to the area would not fall within these. This is really to help us guide outside requests from outside organizations and in our two large events.
Thanks for clarifying that. I propose a motion to pass this and just put the language in there so that we're notifying the new homes on the plateau.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Well done, Mr. Gold. Okay, we're down to the consent calendar, and now we are on to 4A. Craig, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor Mullen, city council. So tonight, we have kind of a housekeeping thing for your consideration. It's an adoption of a resolution authorizing placement of some taxes that we'd be collecting from the Garbage District on to the tax rolls for the County of LA. As the staff report alluded to, there's basically two areas in Malibu that kind of are divided in the center of town. On the east end, it's the Malibu Valley, or Malibu Garbage Disposal District, and that's administered by the city or the County of Los Angeles. On the west end, it's a private contract with Waste Management. On the west end, the fees are collected by Waste Management and paid quarterly to the city for this program. On the east end, it would be collected, this is a resolution to authorize the county to collect those fees on the tax roll, and that would occur on an annual basis. Those fees are collected, it's about $17,000 a year, and they're collected and used for a number of the recycling programs, and also for the city to meet its mandatory obligations for CalRecycle and the annual report that we have to provide to them. It pays both for staff time and the consultants' time to do all that. So basically, it's just an approval. To get onto the, the resolution is necessary in an open public hearing in order to, for the county to authorize that to be on the tax roll. So that's what we're doing this evening. So the staff recommendation is to approve Resolution 1816 to do so.
I'd like to make a motion.
Thank you. Craig, is any, any comments? Sorry. Did you want to make a motion?
Yes.
Okay.
To go with the staff recommendation.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. On to 5 Alpha, Report on Polystyrene Ordinance.
Good evening, Mayor Mullen, city council, back again. So tonight, we have for you kind of a, I'm going to give you a really brief update on where we're at with the polystyrene ban and then seek council direction, like the staff report, of how we may make that whole polystyrene ban more efficient and more kind of overall consuming of what all the products are. So to start with, as far as the outreach, we've been really successful in our programs, outreach through the Clean Bay Restoration, or the Clean Bay Certification Program for restaurants and a number of outreach programs we've done with markets and everything. We've worked with a number of purveyors. I have some sample products. A number, for a lot of the food service industry, there are a lot of options that are available. This is a bamboo product, this is a paper product for lids. We're working with a lot of purveyors just to show the, all these people, the businesses in Malibu, that there are a lot of alternatives available. So it's not like we just banned something and it's just because we wanted to get rid of plastic. There are serious and viable options that are economically feasible that we all recognize they probably cost a little more, but we are able to do that. Now, one of the things in compliance that came up is there is some confusion in the way the ordinance was written, because when we first adopted or amended the polystyrene ordinance, it was focused on polystyrene foam. And polystyrene foam, as you may recall, is the main product that makes what's the trademark, is styrofoam. And there was the concern because styrofoam breaks down into the small beads and pellets that are friable and end up in the ocean. But polystyrene also comes in other forms, and that's not something at the original time we considered. We were more concerned with the polystyrene foam and how that breaks down. So staff met with the garbage people, the United Waste Services for the east end of town and for Waste Management on the other side of town. And really, in those meetings and our work with our waste consultant, we determined that there really isn't a recycling program available for a lot of this. So currently, with China not accepting recycled plastics, they're just not, they're not taking anything. So the whole market has disappeared for that. Polystyrene has really turned out to not be something that's recyclable, and it's also one of the things that's not compostable. So I'll come back to that in a little bit, but first, what staff is suggesting in consideration of the polystyrene ban, I think the first thing we need to do, and staff is recommending, we reconsider the definition for polystyrene so that it not only includes polystyrene foam, but it also includes solid polystyrene. So just to show you an example, and I'm sure, like in most of the food takeout places, we've all seen lids and plastics similar to this. This is polystyrene, solid polystyrene number six. It even has a resin coat on here indicating that it's recyclable. It is not recyclable. There is no facility available to the city or the haulers in the city that can recycle this, and so where does it go? It ends up in the landfill as solid waste. So what staff is recommending, that we change the definition for polystyrene to include solid polystyrene, so this becomes also banned and replaced by products such as these other products that are compostable and can be used in a lot of the facilities that are currently available. Along with that, then staff is also seeking a recommendation, as I said in a few minutes ago, we would like to change or eliminate the term for recycled plastic. The polystyrene, as I say, is not recyclable, there's no facility that can handle that. Also, in conversation with our haulers as far as compostable, there are no commercial industrial high-strength compostable facilities available to the city. And most of the compost that is, such as Agromon, Skylar went with us to Agromon, their permits and their regulations require them to break down, have any product that's in the, in the compost pile to break down within 45 days, and these plastics do not. They take up to four years to actually break down in a composting facility, and they could take much longer if they end up in a marine environment. So also seeking direction from council is to change the code so that we no longer change the ordinance so that we don't address those two things. So what we're seeking really tonight, and then an additional thing that I would like to bring to council's attention and seek guidance from council on, is we currently, the way the polystyrene foam ordinance part of the ban is written, it allows distributors and, say, markets or different things to sell polystyrene foam products. Staff is always recommend, also recommending that we consider banning, so basically, it'd be like selling the product styrofoam cups that are used and by the public and not provided by a food service entity, but rather by a market or some other store like that. There's a lot of products, plates, we all have seen the plates, the cups, and other things like that. So we're, we're seeking council's directions if we want to also ban that along with that. So in summary, looking for direction from council to change the definition of polystyrene to include rigid poly or solid polystyrene, to see if council also wants to adopt or amend the ordinance to ban the sale and distribution at all stores, not just food service providers for polystyrene foam, and then also change the ordinance to remove recyclable and compostable products from there. So I look for your comments and direction of how we proceed with this.
Just if I may add, in that tour that we took a while ago, Craig, it was also emphasized the fact that how having those products in the green waste things wrecks the process that they're doing and makes their process a lot more difficult and a lot more costly. So I think that it's prudent for us to set the example. In a perfect world, we would have an additional trash can that was a compostable trash can that went to a facility that does that, which, Craig, that is something that I would like to see, you know, possibly explored if there's a vendor that does offer that in our area and what the cost would be associated with that. But at this time, I think we should definitely take, I would make a motion to take staff's recommendation in regards to the solid polystyrene items, changing the wording as recommended. And I would like to see that some language is also added that prevents caterers and the food service trucks that operate in the city from using and distributing these products and bringing them in, the commercial entities that do that kind of stuff. I mean, you-
Film shoots, too.
Film shoots, all of that kind of stuff, and that could be, that could be, you know, directly given to SWS as a, you know, the guidelines for those kind of things.
If we go ahead with something like that, what would be appropriate phase in period or kind of any comments on that?
Well, that's a good question. We really haven't considered that. I want to get direction from council, but I think because of the polystyrene ban the way it is, and a lot of the dates, say, for the plastic straws and stirrers are coming up June 1st, we're fastly approaching some of the deadlines, and polystyrene deadline, it really has come and gone. They're supposed to be complying with the parts of the ordinance, and I think most of them are. We gave them a six-month window before. We could probably consider the same thing, a six-month window to change and be able to get rid of the products that they have before they start to resupply any of the shelves and the markets and other places that sell those products. But when we bring it back to council, we're open to any considerations or suggestions council wants to make on that.
All right. I'd just like to add real quick. Craig, could you hold in your right hand, could you hold that up for the council, the tan tray that you had, that one there? If you go to some of the major food restaurants now in Malibu, they're all carrying that. Chipotle, the other day, I went down there, and they, they're all, they're trying their best, and a lot of them are succeeding, and I was happy to see it implemented the way it has been so far, and thank you for your efforts and education.
And I agree. I think there's a few restaurants in town, quite a few actually, that are really trying hard and proud of their actions that they're taking, and they're really taking the right step forward to promote all of this and, again, working with the distributors that these products are available.
I just wanted to say that I'm pretty sure that Vintage Market, they used to do the tops and the bottom where the brown stuff, then they got rid of the tops and now they use the clear tops. So it's doable, and I'm talking about the takeout food. So it's doable. I think that I agree with Rick. I think this is what you were saying, that especially for vendors that are coming in the city, I don't want them punished. I just think, I mean, now, you know, I think there needs to be a phase in and that we do a big education. And maybe when somebody's getting their TUP for a wedding or an event, something like that, just the same way as we had to, you know, tell the valets that they had to wear the vest, that we figure out ways to get that information out to the people so that they can, because a lot of the people that, let's say, cater or things like that, they already have bought a lot of things so that they can start looking at other alternate products.
I would like to propose September 1st as a deadline for that, if that's feasible with the council, or October 1st, when we come back as a timeline.
I'll second that.
Christie?
We just need to analyze it a little bit.
Okay, so I would like to analyze a four-month period, you know, six, it'd be six months from now approximately, or if we, I guess that would put us into October, but, yeah. You get where I'm going with that?
Absolutely.
Okay, so you'll bring something back to us that has a little more updated version of things that are going to be banned in an appropriate phase in period?
Yeah, hopefully, probably not the next council meeting, but the one right after that, I have to work with the city attorney on the language.
All right, thank you very much. And now we're on to 4B, Update on Meals for Homeless Individuals. Excuse me, 5B, thank you, Jefferson.
So I just wanted to give a brief-
So I just wanted to give a brief update based on the direction that the city council provided on this subject.
Wait, 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 excuse me. I have a public speaker that I neglected to mention. Okay, we're going to do the staff report first, then you'll do, so you're speaking. Sorry.
And since the council discussed it, what I did was speak with the county of Los Angeles, who has agreed to open up the old courthouse space at the civic center to allow the meals to be held there. And I met last week with a representative from the county supervisor's office and several people from the county operations team to talk about the logistics and use of the property. We're still trying to finalize the actual days of the week that we would be able to use the facility, and that's based on the cleaning schedule for the county. So they're going to be getting back to me on that. Right now, we're looking at doing two days a month during the week. And the reason we selected during the week as opposed to a weekend day is that the county is very interested in providing some additional services besides just having meals occur. I also reached out to Pepperdine University, who actually is very involved in assisting the homeless population. They have a legal aid service that they provide down at the Union Rescue Mission in downtown Los Angeles at Skid Row. And they also provide psychological services in that same area. And they have a big volunteer program with their students. So they are very interested in being a partner with the city and the county and the faith community to make this a substantial program. And if they can, they will contribute financially towards the costs that the county will incur by opening up the building. So right now, I'm looking at being able to have the city's outreach workers through the People Concern involved, having somebody from LASSA, which is the LA County Homeless Services Group, and also the MET Team, which is the mental evaluation team through the LA County Sheriff's Office, participate in the program. So it looks like it's turning out to be a really terrific service program for our homeless community. So I'm going to finalize the dates that we'll hold this on and then circle back with Card and the other members who spoke at the city council meeting to work with them. So happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Riva. And Mr. Wenaker, you have the podium and you have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. I won't go through repeating many of the items that were in an email that I did send to every council member. And there'll be other opportunities, I'm sure, for me and others to express their opinions on the subject. I was born in Jersey City, New Jersey. Many people think of that as the garden spot of the Garden State. And I lived, I grew up there in the early 60s during a lot of urban decay. And even though the apartment building we lived on in backed on to one of the largest parks in Jersey City, I couldn't go in it. And it was very dangerous. I certainly couldn't go in alone. I couldn't ride a bike. I couldn't play in the park. And my parents moved outside of Jersey City to a little bedroom community called Tenafly in Bergen County. Now, they did that for, not because my parents were elitists or felt themselves better than everybody else. They were very liberal people. Both my parents marched on Washington with the MLK, the original I Have a Dream speech. But they did so to give a better life for myself, for themselves, but also for me and my sister. I could ride a bike. I could play. I could go out, explore the town. And not only was there a great expense to my parents to do that, but it was more than just the money of moving there. My father took a 10-minute commute to work and it became well over an hour each way. But there was a reason. If he wanted to stay in Jersey City and live amongst the, you know, the same urban problems, we would have stayed there. So my point of that is just, that's the reason why many of us have moved to Malibu from whether it be other parts of the country or other parts of the county. Now that said, I think one can be very sensitive to the needs of less fortunate and homeless. Without, but not necessarily, if we don't agree with necessarily creating just a meal program, that doesn't mean we're not sensitive to the problem that I think we all know exists, not only in Malibu, but countywide and nationwide. As a real estate developer, I go into parts of LA that, you know, you just can't even go in some areas now because the encampments are so great. So anyway, my time is running out. There are two kinds of homeless. Basically, the one kind of homeless which is, wants to get back into homes and be a productive member of society. And there's others who, for whatever reason, sometimes mental illness or drugs cannot or are not willing. I think our focus has to be on helping those who are willing to receive help and they need it. And the other thing is if we're going to do this, let's not just put a Band-Aid on by feeding people, because where are they going to go after the meal, right? Where are they going to go? They're going to stay somewhere in Malibu. Let's be a leader in the problem. And there's many solutions I think we as a city can look at to be a leader in helping with this problem without just being someone who feeds, feeds people several meals.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wenaker. We appreciate that. And your well-crafted email was also appreciated.
Oh, thank you guys very much. Good night.
Have any comments?
Yes, I'd like to add for the city manager to contact the VA for the, I think they call it a charter nine or a ticket nine, or there's some term for the VA. Because we have several veterans that are part of our homeless population. And I think if some of the VA specialists were out here once or twice during that, I mean, it's a drive out for an hour, make an assessment, and then drive back. I think that would be another entity that should be invited.
That's a terrific idea. We'll do that.
Laura?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Wenaker. I think that Riva answered some of those concerns about making this a multidisciplinary event. My concern, and I know that we've all gotten a lot of emails, you know, certainly with people concerned about this, is that we provide services to the people that are here in Malibu that are homeless or dealing with this issue and that it's, that we are not, or that the groups that are doing this, the faith community, are not working actively to bring in people into Malibu and bring in more people. What?
I said recruits.
Your choice of words. For these, for these meals, because as we know, there are certainly enough people here already that need these services. And so on that, I would support this. Do we have to vote on this? Or is it just a, receive an update?
It was just an update.
An update, okay. So then I will not make a motion. Thank you.
Lou, do you have anything you want to say?
Well, if we're talking about feeding people twice a month, I never thought that was really going to do much for them. But if we're going to combine it with services from the county, then I know now that they have the financial wherewithal to pull off. I think that's definitely something we should try.
Okay. To use an expression from a different agenda item, I'm cautiously optimistic that this new format and presence of officials from the county that does have the resources to help us can bear more fruit than the previous attempts at feeding the homeless. So let's see how it goes. Thank you very much for that update. And we are on to new business. And we have a West Basin Municipal Water District draft environmental impact report for the proposed ocean water desalinization project. Craig, you're up again.
Clean up my mess there. Mayor Mullen and council, as I'm sure you're aware, West Basin last, or about two weeks ago, released their draft EIR on a proposed desalinization plant more located like in the area of Hermosa Beach. So some of the cities such as Hermosa Beach and Manhattan Beach reached out to the city. We have a lot of cooperation with them on sustainability issues and other issues and our polystyrene bans and a number of things. So they reached out and they were trying to get a group of cities together to pay for a consultant to look at the draft EIR from a technical standpoint only, not a legal standpoint. So we're just looking at the technical part of it, what the impacts to the environment and other things like that would be. If you read a little bit about some of the things, we all agree we need water. But if you read about some of the things that happened to the environment with the ocean intake, ocean water intake, and the brine exchange and replenishment back out into the ocean, it's some things to be considered about. These cities also have marine protected areas such as we do. They have areas of biological significance ASBSs such as we do. And so there's a concern of what the impact to the environment would be. So what we're proposing to do is jointly hire a consultant to look at the draft EIR and provide comments. Each of the cities that participates in that particular program would receive the same comments. And then we would use those comments as a city, not as a group of cities, but would bring those back to council. And council could see what the comments were, add comments or whatever that they wanted to do. But again, just look at the technical feasibility of it. And at that time, if council's so elected, they could choose either support the project or not support the project. We're not really looking at it for any kind of support other than the technical feasibility and the impacts to the environment. So what staff is asking council to do is provide direction to the city manager that we allow the city manager enter into a contract to hire this consultant and join with, currently it's Manhattan Beach and Hermosa Beach. There's a couple of Torrance and a couple of other cities are looking into the program and they'll be considering shortly whether they want to join that. Right now, the cost would be estimated about $5,000 or $6,000 for the city of Malibu to do that. If we choose to do that, then as I say, the comments will come back to council for consideration of what they want to move forward with submitting those into West Basin on that desalinization plant. So with that, I'm open for any questions.
Thank you very much, Craig. Comments?
I have a comment. I do know the council members in Hermosa Beach and Manhattan Beach, they're very supportive of everything that we've been doing. I'd like us to be supportive of what they're doing. And I think it's a great idea to find out more about this because water is the issue, whether it's desalinization or like the water replenishment district, something obviously has to be done. And investigating whether this is the best way, I think is a really good idea as far as work in part. So I'd like to make a motion to go with the stand of recommendation.
I'll second the motion with discussion, if I may. Sorry. You may, and why don't you just be the next to discuss?
Thank you, Craig. So at Santa Monica Bay Restoration Commission, which is kind of the big boy in the tank down there in the bay, this has come up too. And I'd like, if we do approve this as a council, to make sure that they reach out to the technical staff there at SMBRC, as well as to consult the people in San Diego with the plant that's online right now, which provides 15% of the consumable water in San Diego County. So I'm sure those assessments will be part of the scope of this, but I just want to remind them that, or whoever it is, if we choose to go that route, that there's a bit of a review here. And I think the council would probably like to know all the information that pertains to the DSal plants and how they operate now, where they operate, and what the downside of these plants is with the slurry, the brine slurry. So I would add that into that as awareness for if we choose to go that way, that that be part of the scope of the examination.
Well, I would, I would support that. And I just wanted to add that, you know, I mean, it is our, what is it? We refer to them as our water purveyor? Is that the correct allocation of that? So it's something that we have a vested interest in. And let's not forget that we're the, maybe one of the larger land area-based cities that are a participant in this beloved Santa Monica Bay in which water quality has improved over the last 20, 30 years, I would argue. And we ought to see that that continues.
Good idea. Last thing I'd like to throw into that equation as well is the dispersion eventually, and somebody to reach to District 29 for an opinion on that as well.
Laura, you have some comments?
Yes, thank you. I can't remember what they are now. But I would like to make sure that these other cities are going to be participating because if they don't, I would imagine that the cost would then go up if Torrance and, well, Manhattan Beach and Hermosa, but Redondo and Santa Monica. I think Santa Monica's already agreed to be part of this. So, and I would support that, but I just want to make sure that the other cities join in. And this is your recommendation too, right? Staff's recommendation is to join, is to join this group and get this information, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Then I support this.
Yeah, I think the implications of the upside of this, potential upside is immense. Absolutely immense. And of course, the unintended consequences could be quite severe too. So I am full support of joining this effort. And let's vote on it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, it passes. Thank you. Thanks, Craig. Okay, we are now on to 7A, the unification of a Malibu Unified School District. And Elizabeth Shabelson, is she here?
She actually went home to her babies. I'm happy to give a staff report or if the ad hoc would like to go ahead, that's fine. You want to go ahead, Laura?
As many of you know, Rick and I are on the ad hoc school district separation. Oh, okay. And so a couple of weeks ago, I guess it was, oh, on March 20th, the Board of Ed of the Santa Monica-Malibu Unified School District passed a motion. And it articulated a framework to achieve a unification of an independent Malibu Unified School District. And what they recommended was to adopt the concept of a 50-year revenue sharing framework for Malibu unification. And so the board directed its leadership, along with the superintendent, to reach out to the city of Malibu and present this concept for unification. And the board asked the council to withdraw or put on hold its current petition for unification until a time that we could all come together to an agreement and then bring that all together. And then they also asked, it had a number of different points about a framework for inequitable sharing of property taxes, the potential sharing of discretionary or local revenues for a limited period of time, a mechanism for evaluating or rebalancing, adjusting the formula at certain intervals, a performance objective that any adjustments or rebalancing must continue to meet, and guiding principle that stability and equity for all students in both districts is essential. And they also offered the possibility of charter school configuration while, kind of as an interim measure, while these, while unification, the process of unification was going forward. So, but again, this concept was only valid if the city of Malibu withdraws its current petition or suspends it. So Rick and I have discussed this a lot and we met with our consultant and talked with staff. And so what we are recommending to council is, well, one of, Rick can talk about what we're recommending, but I think that the, some of the important things that we need to look at is that we would be willing to suspend the petition process in support of negotiation efforts. But the first thing would be that we would ask LACO or the Los Angeles County Office of Education for, and the unification, to move forward with acceptance of our petition. They have not accepted our petition yet. And it's a little bit different process when it's a city bringing forward a petition as opposed to a resident petition. The, LACO needs to actually accept the petition. So we would ask that they move forward with accepting the petition and then we would request a temporary suspension of further actions. And because withdrawing it might actually be detrimental. And because withdrawing it might actually be detrimental to our efforts, because once it is accepted, the, LACO can help with the negotiation, they can provide some expertise, they can give us feedback, and so we considered that important. Also, having the petition accepted keeps the topic active for the county committee and their members and their staff, so to be able to respond to information. It also would be important for our legislators, and we know that we will need special legislation from Sacramento, so it, it would be important for them to see that LACO and both cities are still engaged because the petition has been accepted. And I think it's also important for all of our Malibu sta, we think it's important for our Malibu stakeholders to know that the petition has been formally accepted and then suspended while we move on to our next steps. And so, Rick, do you wanna fill in on the next?
Sure, and you know, because it's a municipality that, timeline that normally a, let's say a residential submission would be beholden to doesn't apply to us, that's, so that gives us a greater degree of flexibility. But what I, what the ad hoc committee discussed, and what we'd like to do is to, as we move forward to the negotiating phase, and looking forward to a harmonious negotiation phase with Santa Monica, to designate city Malibu staff members to actually, to negotiate under the review and supervision of the ad hoc committee, and to represent the city in the negotiations with the Santa Monica-Malibu Unified School District. And of course, anything that came out of those negotiations would ultimately have to be voted on by the city council. And also to have staff direct draft and send a letter to the LACO Committee on School District Organization with the city's resolution response to the SMMUSD's proposal, and to request a formal acceptance, as Laura said, of the petition, but to suspend further steps pending the outcome of negotiations between SMMUSD and the city of Malibu. And holding a formal meeting between the ad hoc committee and our counterpart at SMMUSD, simply to deliver the official council, the council resolution in support of accepting a framework in principle, and introduce the designated negotiator negotiation team, who will be working with them. So it should be a little simpler and less moving parts, and what we're gonna recommend is that the city manager and the city attorney be the chief negotiators, and that everything is under the review of the ad hoc committee to prepare something if ultimately they can come to an agreement for voting on by the city council. So do I have any questions?
I just wanted to say that I think that, that our recommendations fulfill all of the suggestions and requirements that the Board of Ed put forward in their resolution. And so it's basically accepting, asking like to, to accept the petition and then suspend it, and then us designating staff to be the negotiators to report back to, and have oversight by the ad hoc committee.
Yeah, and the acceptance and suspending thing, it has to go through that review process anyway, eventually, even we do come to an agreement with them, so it's just essentially getting the foot in the door and stopping while we come to an agreement with Santa Monica. Any comments from anybody?
I have a comment. First of all, I want you to know that I'm, I will support whatever you guys decide, because I think it's important that we are unanimous in our decision. I have serious concerns about mortgaging our children's education for the next 50 years. But other than that, I think the, the concept of asking LACO to accept it and then suspend it, that's fine. Withdrawing it, I think, would be a nonstarter, as far as I'm concerned.
I think it's important to remember that, I don't know if we're mortgaging anything, that if nothing happened, we would, it would still be the same, we would still be sharing resources, and the financial situation would, would still be the same if nothing happened. And so this gives us an opportunity to remember that it's all about the best education for our children, the best schools, and having our schools reflect our local communities, and having local control over our schools.
I, I understand that freedom isn't free, okay? But 50 years is a long time.
I get it, Lou. For those of you watching at home, the new parents might wanna check on page two of two and see the bullet points there that are kind of pertinent to this discussion, if you're just getting into it. I would support what Rick and Laura have come up with, and understanding Lou's position as well. But please, comment to us as a council or to the ad hoc committee, we need to hear from you all the time, but I believe we're on the right track, but they do have to receive it, because if we don't, we have nothing, we don't, we've taken one of our chips and thrown it.
I'll make a motion to, I don't know if I need to make a motion, but I wanna go ahead and proceed with the recommendation of our ad hoc committee.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Now, having said a bunch of things here, are you clear on what we need to do? Okay.
Would you like, would you take this?
It's Laura's letter.
I would, yes.
Okay. I would like the, our, our local assembly member, Assembly Member Bloom, has a bill 2422, and it, it's about the use of anticoagulants. I actually already sent a letter that I think you all got a copy, and they are meeting tomorrow, the committee, and so we're just getting in right under the gun, I've already spoken to Mary, if this gets support, that she will send it out early tomorrow morning so that the committee would get a copy of this. And I know you've all read this, but it really just tightens up the, the current use of pesticides and anticoagulants, and I think that this is so important, especially for Malibu, and especially for the Santa Monica Mountains, to be able to control the use of these and to use less of them for our human and especially our animal population. So I, I'm just gonna make a, a motion just to get it started.
I'll second the motion as it is.
Okay, I'll put the floor for comments.
The time is now.
Okay, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. And that is our final item.
We have a motion to adjourn in memory of Bonnie Reese.
Okay. We are adjourning in the memory of Bonnie Reese. Thank you very much, have a nice evening.